Good morning. Is there something wrong with this side?[640.78][640.78](Laughter) But I like it. Let's just make sure the camera show over there only.[646.21][646.21](Laughter) Thank you for coming to this full committee hearing today on the House Committee of Agriculture and Food Systems. Today is April 11th, and this is a 10:30 a.m. agenda, and we are convening in room 325, only on the right side. I am Vice Chair Mathias Kush of the Agriculture Committee, and today we have Chair Kahaloa, and we'll have Rep. Quinlan joining us shortly. Before we get started, I'm going to go over some brief housekeeping rules in order to allow us as many people that testify as possible to be a two-minute time limit per testifier. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to the noon floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. Please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify, and after your testimony is complete, the Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only. Please use that chat only for technical issues. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting if disconnected while presenting testimony. You may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note, the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule a hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyright images. Please refrain from any profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. Okay, thank you. So first off, starting off, we will be hearing SCR 88 requesting the Department of Agriculture to establish and administer microbial algal soil products pilot program. Wow. And first to testify, the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its written testimony, offering supporting the intent. Here for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. That is the only person, our in-person testimony. Do we have any Zoom? Seeing none, anybody else like to testify on this measure? Okay, we had one in support and two comments. Chair and single committee member, questions?
No questions, Chair.
Okay, moving on to SCR 139, requesting the Department of Agriculture to designate Cunia, Lelehua Plateau, and Poa Moho as the central Oahu agricultural corridor, and to establish a list prioritizing potential agricultural infrastructure improvement projects that would provide the most value to the state. Okay, first up to testify in person, Mr. Gates, Department of Agriculture.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments.
Thank you. And next up in person, we have Wendy Gady, Wendy Gady of Agriculture Development Corporation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair Wendy Gady with the ADC. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom on this? Nope. Anybody else like to testify? Please, ma'am. Please state your name and if you represent an organization.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Stephanie Wayland. I'm representing the Cunia Village Agriculture Worker Housing. And I thought I sent in testimony. I think it was late, but I'm pretty sure it got in. Anyway, just want to, I spoke to you before about the House concurrent measure here, and, but do want to add that agriculture is a business, and I think you understand that, but it's a complicated business. It's not like just going into a warehouse and starting up a business. So it requires land, water, labor, transportation, marketing, warehousing, and value-added opportunities. So the state has done a lot in the last 50 years since we've been trying to diversify agriculture and providing things for land and water, but they're here and there and everywhere. They've not put it together, and agriculture is a business that needs to have it put together. And that's what this bill is proposing. Give us the opportunity, give the agency the opportunity to put together a plan for a corridor. And the reason they're using central Oahu is because in central Oahu, you already have large, medium, and small farmers. You have four water systems, two R1 water systems and two ditch systems. And you have a company, a local company, promising that they will market and transport the products from a hub. Okay, we have labor and warehousing. So they have all the elements that a farmer needs, all in one continuous area. And so I think that that's a very good effort to try to incentivize that area, as we've been trying to incentivize scattered. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there, that this is an opportunity, if you pass this, you passed the first one from the House side, so I'm just asking to pass this one also, but to make that change, that it goes to ADC, because that's her mandate. The Department of Ag has, you know, mandate all over the place. So I think it's more appropriate to go to the ADC. So thank you for letting me probably go beyond two minutes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I don't see your testimony, so if you have a copy, could you drop it off with one of our staff before you leave? Thank you. Anybody else like to testify on this measure? Okay, members, any questions? Okay. Next up, we have SCR 90 requesting the Agribusiness Development Corporation to assume responsibility for the routine maintenance and repair of the Kohala ditch. And first off, we have Hawaii Department of Agriculture, Mr. Gates.
Aloha, members. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments.
Thank you. And I appreciate your word sticking a little bit. I got that going on, too. Wendy Gady with Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair, Member of the Committee, Wendy Gady with the Agribusiness Development Corporation. We stand on our written comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom for this measure? Okay, anybody else like to testify on this measure? Members, questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the next one, SCR 164. 164, requesting the Department of Agriculture to adopt rules authorizing rodeos on land zone for agricultural use. And first off, we have Hawaii Department of Agriculture in person.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have Nicole Galassi from Hawaii Cattlemen's Council on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Nicole Galassi, on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, we support this resolution as rodeos are key in building the skills needed for cattle production in Hawaii. And these are skills that ensure proper animal handling for bona fide cattle producers. So it is appropriate for the Department of Ag to allow these events on their ag lands. We also respectfully ask that the committee add in authorizing rodeos, livestock events such as 4-H activities, and cow-horse equestrian events, as all of these fall under supporting the ranching community, especially our keiki. Thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you. That is, we had 12 in support, zero opposing, and one comment. Do we have any other Zoom testifiers? Anybody in person like to testify on this measure? Members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to SCR 141, SD1 urging the Department of Agriculture to collaborate with Agribusiness Development Corporation regarding grant funding opportunities with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And first off, we have Wendy Gady of ADC.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair, Member of the Committee, Wendy Gady, ADC. We stand on our written comments.
Okay, thank you. Hawaii Department of Agriculture in person, Mr. Gates.
Thank you. The department stands on its written testimony, draw support of this.
Super, thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom? Anybody in person like to testify on this? Members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we are moving on to SCR 94 SD1 urging the Hawaii Department of Agriculture and Department of Agriculture of the County of Maui to take further meaningful action to address the Axis deer overpopulation. So first off, we have Nicole Galassi of Hawaii Cattlemen's Council on Zoom.
Aloha, Nicole Galassi, on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. We support this measure as Axis deer are both an economic and environmental threat to the state. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And then, we don't have any other testifiers. Would anybody in person here like to testify? Mr. Gates?
I believe Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. I believe the department submitted testimony. I'm not sure if you received it, but we are offering comments on this measure. Here for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Sorry, we just didn't have you marked down, and I'm slave to my highlighter.[1340.61][1340.61](Laughter) Okay, anybody else would like to comment on this measure, resolution? Members, comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to SCR 41 SD1. This is encouraging each county to establish its own biosecurity plan that prioritizes the needs of the county. First off, Hawaii Department of Agriculture, Mr. Gates in person.
Thank you. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments on this measure. Here for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. We also have Robert Half of DLR. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you got it right.
Okay.
Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Department of Agriculture.
Thank you. And then Kristi Martin in person.
Oh, I'm going to be there.
Yeah, 100%.
I know. How did it carry with everybody?
Seems expansive. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Member Kristi Martin, coordinating group on alien pest species, Sea Gaps. Sea Gaps is in support of this measure. You know, Hawaii as a state is in an unusual position compared to the other states of the U.S. in that counties are largely, are not largely, they are preempted from biosecurity, from enacting their own biosecurity regulations. Many states are able to allow counties to do that. That's how they manage or mitigate the movement of weeds between counties. That's how they address even mosquito diseases as they enter different places. But our counties don't do that. And so having them not just plan, but also articulate biosecurity needs, including legislation for their counties, I think is a really wise step. So mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to testify? Anybody else like to testify on this measure? Okay, members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to SCR 56 urging the United States government to develop a national biodiversity strategy. We have Emma Yuen in person. Oh.
Robert Perkins, she couldn't make it this morning. Perkins.
Thank you. I saw her in the hallway. Let me, let her know. I remembered.[1515.03][1515.03](Laughter) Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to testify? Anybody else like to testify on this measure? Mr. Gates?
The department stands on its written testimony, draw support of this measure.
This is SCR 56. I don't have any.
Sorry.
Okay, okay, no problem. Appreciate you keeping me on my toes. Members, any questions? Okay, next measure is SCR 34 SD1 requesting Hawaii's congressional delegation to petition the United States Department of Agriculture to address the lack of parity between Hawaii and other states and territories pertaining to the export of agricultural goods. Hawaii Department of Agriculture in person, Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Ag. We stand on our written comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to testify? Anybody else like to testify on this? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, that is all of our resolutions today. We're going to take a quick recess, and then we'll go straight to decision making after that. Okay, our final bill today, SCR 34, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Members, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote?
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SCR 34, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any members voting no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Next up, we have SCR 94, SD1, and Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Members, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote?
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SCR 94, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any members voting no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, we have SCR 41, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Members, Chair, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 41, is that correct? Yes, 41, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any members voting no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Next up, we have SCR 56, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Members, Chair, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote?
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SCR 56, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any members voting no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, our final bill today, SCR 34, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Members, Chair, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 34, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Will any members be voting no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Members of the Committee and Chair and testifiers today. This concludes our hearing and decision-making today, and I appreciate it. Is this our last hearing?
Till conference, yes.
We might have seven.
Oh, we might have one next week.
Okay, all right. Until maybe next week.[1762.51][1762.51](Laughter).